Chairman McGee.
Here.
Vice Chairman Lord.
Here.
Mayor Bixson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim and Secretary Bavacqua.
Here.
Commissioner Clark Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Gosson. Is expected. Commissioner Hauser.
Here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Stone. It's expected. We have a call.
Thank you very much. We have a call and we can proceed. Please join me now, if you would, in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. Thank you. The next item, number three, is public comment. And before we proceed with that, I just want to give my usual little spiel. This is a virtual meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. This is permitted under the executive order issued by Governor Whitmer earlier this year that allows public bodies to meet virtually. The law actually requires them to meet in person usually. But due to COVID, we're allowed to meet like this virtually. The important thing for everyone to remember is that any action taken by the commission counts. It actually has the weight of laws that we were in the city council chambers. Just for those who are on TV, you'll notice a telephone number displayed at the bottom of the screen. We've done this now a couple of times. It works really well. So as we go through the agenda, if you have something you would like to talk about or some input you think we should have, feel free to call that number and our technical wizards will bring you in live. I don't think we can see you video wise, but we can hear you very well. And it's worked out. It's worked well in the past and some folks have called in with some things that were quite valuable to us. So just keep all that in mind. So I ask at this point, is there any public comment either in writing or have you heard from anyone not technically?
The only people I've heard from stated that they would actually join the call and then they would answer or give their public comment at that time.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item is number four. We have two sets of minutes to approve. First is a regular meeting of August 3, 2020. And if you recall, we considered these two weeks ago at our at our special planning commission meeting. And the maker and seconder of the motion about the apartment complex were not there. And we were unable to proceed with clarity in terms of what they actually meant by their motions. So I'm going to ask Christian and Sarah, kind of put you on the spot here. Mayor Pro Tim Bavacqua had some questions or concern about the way the minutes were written. And we were trying to, this is that issue of posting a performance bond or whatever you might characterize it as. And I'm not sure many of us fully understand how those work. And Dean was trying to get some clarification as to what precisely we were asking this developer to do. This was a condition of site plan approval that was given at that meeting. So Christian, I don't know if you can jump in. You had made the motion and I know you've talked to Dean about this and maybe grant us some clarification about.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, first of all, I apologize for not being able to make it to the last meeting. And I'm sorry this is continuing on. Yeah, so Dean had called and asked me about this and I want to give the best clarification that I can in light of the language that was articulated by me and maybe a little bit inartfully. But nevertheless, my intent was to provide the city with some assurances that the project was either going to be completed or alternatively, if it wasn't, there was a remedy that the city had to remediate the site, put it back to how it was or disassemble or demolish what had been done. Okay? And the example that I'll use is that Bloomfield Park project that was on Telegraph many years ago. I don't know if people are familiar with that, but it was a project that was started. It came to a halt and for three years that thing sat there, you know, half built, half done. All I'm trying to do is to put into place a mechanism or some relief that if for some unforeseen reason, the developer stops progress or defaults or doesn't do anything, there's some type of remedy that the city has to go in and prevent an eyesore from being there for four to five years. And that what is the cost to perform the work in question was what's it going to cost to demolish this? What's it going to cost to put this thing back in a condition that doesn't have it sitting there in a state of a percentage of completion that serves no purpose whatsoever other than to remind everyone of a project that isn't completed.
So remove the structure, remove the.
Exactly. Yes, that's right. And I apologize not only to the other members of the planning commission, but to the developer itself and anyone that I have caused frustration or uncertainty to. I don't expect the developer to get a $40 million bond. I don't expect any developer, frankly, to have to post a bond equal to the amount to do the entire project. The scope of work is more about what's it going to cost to tear down and put the site back to a condition that kind of resembles what it was before he started or she started. And I don't know if that clarifies it or if you need additional information, I'm happy to help.
Now, was that your understanding when you seconded the motion?
It is. We had had some conversation throughout the meeting and I think Attorney Craig may have commented on it. That these are typically, you know, as a city, we're not going to complete the project ourselves, but they're typically used to restore the land to its original condition. And so that was also my understanding.
Okay. Attorney Craig, are you with us here tonight?
I am.
How are you, sir?
I'm well. How are you?
Good. I don't, I don't think we can put a specific dollar amount out here, can we? So if we just use the language, a bond sufficient?
Well, certainly this is, it could be addressed at city council level when it comes to the special project approval. But, you know, you don't necessarily have to have a specific dollar amount today, but you know, you could leave it to administration. You could, you know, the planning commission could suggest one that may be reasonable. I don't know. I mean, we've used the word or the language, you know, $40 million. You know, I, you know, that's a number. I don't know exactly where it came from, but you know, I think that perhaps with some discussion with the developer as to what it would, you know, the scope of a demolition and a raising and a, you know, filling in of the holes and restoration. I think we, maybe we can work with our engineers as well to kind of give us a thumbnail as to what might be reasonable if that's helpful to city council at that point.
Dean, what do you think now hearing that?
It's not really in line with the discussion that I had with Mr. Hauser, but I understand if that was the way people understood it as the intent of the motion, then I have no issues with it.
Okay. So with that understanding, I think we all understand we're treading into an area we don't know a lot about individually. But with that understanding, does anyone want to make a motion to approve these minutes?
Brock, do they need to clarify, this is Blaine, the city manager, do they need to clarify the minute?
I think, I'm sorry, you know, when I did look at the minutes and I think the minutes reflected the words that were used for the most part. So I don't think there's any changes needed for the August 3 minutes. But I believe that the, that Maureen will be able to pick up the discussion when it comes to the September 8 minutes. So tonight's minutes will give that clarification. So I don't necessarily think there's anything that needs to be, you know, you don't really clarify in minutes from a meeting gone by if that really wasn't the level of discussion. I think the helpfulness will be in this meeting's minutes that will give that context. So I think just a motion to approve the minutes from August 3 would be the appropriate motion.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Attorney Jeff, when you were having negotiations with the developer, were they, were they okay with the $40 million?
We haven't, I'm sorry, we haven't had any discussions. We haven't seen the draft development agreement come back from them. So that's not a discussion item that's been had between the attorneys or administration or anything like that. So we're waiting for their draft development agreement to come back. And it's my understanding that they intend to make that a topic in that development agreement. They're aware that there is this discussion that's occurred. And it's my understanding that they're going to address that in the development agreement itself, which I think is an appropriate place for it.
And then the city council can handle that appropriately at that point?
Yes.
Okay. So with that, would someone make a motion to approve these minutes of August 3?
Commissioner King makes a motion to approve the minutes from August 3.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported. This is to approve the mission, the meeting minutes of August 3 as written. Any other discussion? The roll call, please.
King? Abro, yes. Hauser?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Gosson did not come yet. Lord?
Yes.
Stone? Stone? McGee?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Next item, also part of number four, is approval of the minutes of the special meeting of August 20, 2020. Any discussion or questions on those? And does anyone want to make a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
The mayor's made a motion. Is there support? Mr. Stone, welcome. Would you like to support this motion? Put your, push your audio on. That's been moved forward. The roll call, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Stone? Yes. Bavacqua?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you. Number five. This is scheduled for a public hearing for consideration of the site plan for the city hall entry vestibule located at 406th Street. Madam Planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will share my screen. Can any, everyone see the screen or no?
That's you, Vidya.
Oh, you're not seeing the screen. Okay, so I oh. Okay, I am having.
Is that a wedding or something?
I'm having, I'm having technical difficulties. I'm trying to open over here and.
Yeah, Vidya, just share your screen or back out of it and then share the screen. It's okay.
Okay, let me try this. Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay. I had it open on two windows, so there was a little issue.
We enjoyed the picture. It was very pretty.
I'm sorry, what did you see then?
It was probably you and another woman and.
Oh, my goodness, me and my sister. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, at the city's request, we have reviewed a proposal to add approximately 125 square foot building addition to city hall that is located at 406th Street in the O1, which is the limited office district. The applicant, just the city's engineer representing the city, appeared for a preliminary hearing on August 3 and was scheduled for a public hearing at this thing. With regard to use, the proposed addition is to create a covered vestibule for entry into city hall. And the present configuration basically allows for the main hallway to be exposed to the elements every time the door is open. The installation of the vestibule will create an enclosed space in here so that there is controlled entry and exit out of the building. Principal buildings are permitted as a special exception use in any zoning district. The city hall is an existing special exception use, so the proposed addition does not need special exception approval again at this time. Proposed addition is not impacting any access rights to the property, is not causing any change in parking counts. With regard to pedestrian access, the addition is placed on a stretch of existing concrete. So the two benches and brick pavers that are located currently in this location are to be shifted further to the south to its new location. That's the only change that is being caused by this. All of the areas that are disturbed by the proposed construction will be restored with landscaping in the area. The proposed addition is to be constructed of glass and steel. It's a pre manufactured unit that is to be attached to the existing building. The applicant did provide this colored rendering, which shows how it will integrate itself into the existing building. No new lighting is being proposed on the exterior of the building for the addition. And as I mentioned, the two benches that are currently existing are just going to be relocated. So we are not going to lose out on any existing amenities. Based on our review of the proposal, it is our recommendation that the planning commission grant site plan approval for the addition to city hall. I would be happy to answer any questions here, my husband.
Thank you. Any questions for the planner from the commissioners? Mr. Manager, are you the representative of the applicant this evening?
I'd be happy to.
Any additional information for us on this? Your presentation from a few weeks back was very thorough.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know if our engineers, if Seal or Jason wants to, the architect might want to comment. Hi, this is Jason Arlo from AEW. I'm more than happy to answer any questions. I think Vidya had covered it, covered it pretty well.
Okay.
If you have any further questions on the architecture, please let me know.
Do we have any questions for the administrations? All right, this is scheduled for a public hearing tonight and I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:18 and ask if there is anyone who's joined us virtually who has any kind of a comment on this. Sienna, any, anyone waiting?
There is not.
Okay, on this one, nobody is waiting. So we'll declare the public hearing held and closed. We'll call it 7:19. And move this back to the commissioners. This is before us for a site plan approval tonight. So the floor is open to you. No discussion. Hello, Seal, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. Does anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, so moved.
Dennis, I'm sorry, someone is actually calling to make a.
Okay. Okay, go ahead and put them on. Good evening.
Hello. Hi, hello. We have a question. I'm not, we're having some technical issues hearing. I'm not sure, are we speaking now of the 1205 North Main?
No, not yet. We're on the one before that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think I heard, Mr. Mayor, did you make the motion to approve? Yeah, I did. I was, I was trying to make it a bunch of times, but I realized I was on mute, so I apologize. Is there support for this motion?
Patricia Clark Martin supports.
Very good. Been moved and supported. Any other discussion? The roll call, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you very much and good luck. I hope you have that done before winter.
Thank you.
Next item is number six. This is also scheduled for a public hearing for the consideration of a site plan for the proposed multifamily projects located at 1205 North Main Street. Vidya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will share the site plan. This project. Can everybody see the site plan?
Yes.
Okay. At the city's request, we have conducted a preliminary review of a request from Mr. Schneider to construct five, two and a half story buildings with two residential units each for a total of 10 residential units. Site you're all familiar with is located at the northwest corner of North Main and Farnale Street intersection and is zoned O2, which is restricted office district. Now, the applicant, there is a little bit of history to this particular site. The applicant originally received site plan and special exception approval in 2015 for the construction of a two story mixed use development, which had office space and eight residential units. Subsequently, in 2018, that applicant modified the plan and received approval for a three story mixed use development with featured slightly smaller office space and six residential condo units. For various reasons, neither project was built. At this time, the applicant has submitted a new proposal, residential uses only. They appeared before you for a preliminary plan hearing on August 3 and received feedback for the project. At this time, they have submitted a revised plan addressing the concerns that were noted. With regard to the use, two family dwellings are permitted as a principal land use in the O2 district by the zoning ordinance. However, they are subject to the requirements of the RT district. So it is a principal permitted use, but it is subject to the requirements of the residential two family dwelling district. With regard to regular access, the subject site has existing access drive off Main Street and they have another access drive off Farnale. The site is also bound by a 16 foot wide public alley on the west side. The applicant is proposing to eliminate the existing access drives of Main and Farnale and all access to the units will be limited to the alley to the west itself. As Mr. Schneider explained at the last meeting, they are adding additional pavement to the alley in order to make sure that it meets the full 16 foot width requirement that the right of way is designated for. With regard to setbacks, the required front side and rear yard setbacks in the RT district are 25 feet, five feet for one side, 10 feet for the other, for a combined total of 15 feet and a rear yard of 35 feet. The proposed buildings comply with all of the required setbacks. The plan does show garden patios that are located within the 25 foot front yard setback requirement. But it was our understanding from the last meeting that these garden patios are set at or below grade. So technically, under the ordinance, they do not constitute a structure and they are not subject to the setback requirements or structures. As to pedestrian access, the site does have existing sidewalks along Main Street and Farnale, but the existing side was only four feet wide. Typically, for any public sidewalk, the minimum required width is five feet. And the site plan shows that new 5 foot wide sidewalks will be installed along both frontages. In addition, there is going to be a connecting sidewalk on the rear of the buildings that's four feet wide and sidewalk connections provided to the individual building. These sidewalk connections are only four feet wide. However, since these are residential units, two family units, the applicant is not required to make them barriers be accessible or five feet. Only the public sidewalks are required to be five feet. Based on the ordinance standards, two parking spaces per dwelling unit, so a total of 20 spaces are required. The site plan shows one space within each garage unit for 10 and then it shows two parking spaces outside. They are proposing tandem parking space. The planning commission has on previous occasions agreed and approved tandem parking spaces when all those spaces that are in tandem are assigned to one unit or one owner only. This is to prevent somebody from parking, if say you're parked inside the garage, somebody else parks behind you and now you can't get out of your garage. So prevent that. The applicant has shown tandem parking, so there are 10 spaces in here. According to the applicant, the 36 foot depth accommodates two 18 foot big spaces. So according to them, there is one more parking space for the unit and one for a guest parking hall. A loading space is not required for this use. With regard to trash removal, if the planning commission recollects, previously there was a dumpster shown located right off the alley and the ordinance did not permit that. The applicant has reconsidered their plan and completely eliminated the dumpster enclosure. Trash pickup at this time will be through individual trash cans that are placed inside the garages, just like a single family residential neighborhood. On trash pickup day, the trash cans will be brought for curbside pickup along the alley. With regard to landscape plan, I shall scroll over to the landscape plans. The plan proposes, I will. So the plan proposes some maple trees along the frontage, some hydrangea and some burning bush and barberry shrubs along the site's main street frontage. And then along Farnale, it is a row of criminal arborvitae and some boxwoods. At the previous meeting, we had suggested that these arborvitae be replaced with some other evergreen tree and the applicant's explanation for proposing arborvitae was to so that these trees will grow together. Arborvitae tends to grow in form of living screen that would actually provide some screening for all of the parking areas and for the decks located here. So that was the intent behind the arborvitae. Previous elevation showed a blank brick wall over here and the applicant clarified that this elevation will also have window openings so that the boxwood would actually look more appropriate against a residential window. If the wall was to be blanked, our recommendation would have been to use taller trees. Applicant has also noted that existing mature trees that are located within Farnale right of way will be preserved as is. So there will be some trees seen here, live screen of arborvitae and lower shrubs in this area. Now, the landscape plan does not include any landscaping along the north property line, this five foot wide area. It's just to be maintained as lawn area. We had suggested the applicant provide some trees here. However, the applicant noted that there is an existing green belt on the north side on the property immediately to its north with several trees in it. The applicant had installed those trees in an agreement with the neighboring property owner and those trees are providing required screening for this property also. We had asked for a copy of the agreement and Mr. Schneider did provide a document that shows that it is not an agreement in perpetuity. That agreement was executed and completed and only required Mr. Schneider to provide required trees and landscaping over here. There is, the landscaping will be maintained by the property owner of this parcel. I would defer to the city attorney to see if anything can be done to ensure that that landscaping is maintained because that landscape greenbelt abuts a main access drive to this commercially used property. If for some reason this property owner should take that landscape greenbelt out, there is simply nothing protecting the windows and openings of this residential unit from looking straight into a commercial property. So some insight is needed as to how to ensure the landscaping that is planted over here is maintained as is. With regard to lighting, the applicant has submitted decorative wall mounted light fixtures. I will scroll over to their elevations. The colored rendering will be. The applicant provides this decorative wall mounted fixtures. Manufacturer's cut sheet detail has been proposed, shown, and this is acceptable. However, there are no such fixtures shown on the facade facing Main Street or the facade of the garage that faces the alley. So the elevations that you see up over here, these are the garage elevations. So you don't really see any wall mounted light fixtures on here. I'm sure the intention is there to place them there, but it's just not shown. I'll scroll back to the front building facade. And if you look at the front building facade, does not show any light fixtures either. So the elevations do need to show that. Now, the applicant significantly. Now, the applicant significantly discussed architecture at last meeting. If planning commission recollects, several of these units actually had a four cable on them. So from the side street, they actually looked very abrupt and fake. They were just like a triangular piece placed on top. The applicant at this time has eliminated that in order to show that two of the buildings, the two end buildings, these two buildings are similar, just flipped. These two buildings are similar and flipped, and the center building is of a different architectural elevation. Each one of these units has got different style doors and windows to make it more attractive. The applicant has shown the decorative corners on top and the separation between the buildings, because one of the concerns raised by the planning commission was if any of the roof drainage is going to fall onto the roof next door, because the buildings are located so close next to each other. The applicant has noted that there are integrated downspouts that will take the water down, so there won't be water from the top. In order to also address the narrow tunnel-like gap between the buildings, the applicant has proposed installation of this final trellis feature, which will be covered with ivy. So this will give a sort of a line fence kind of look, will look attractive without creating narrow gaps which are visible between the buildings. The planning commission had previously suggested that the applicant consider the possibility of combining it into three buildings. You know, make these three as one unit and make this as one. However, under the current zoning ordinance designation of O2, that could not be permissible. The moment you combine the building, it becomes a multiple-family residential building, and multiple-family residential buildings are not permitted in the O2 district. The only way the applicant can do is do this project is to propose it as two-family dwelling units. So combining the buildings together is not a feasible option. The applicant did take feedback from the planning commission and has basically addressed all of the concerns that were raised regarding architecture. The plan does state that no signage is proposed as part of the project. The elevations do note that mechanical equipment will be on the rooftop. If you see over here, that is mechanical unit on the rooftop. Commissioner Stone had brought up a question last time. How are you going to access those units in order to maintain them? I did not see a note on the plans that addresses how they will be accessed. So I would like the applicant to provide clarification in that regard. At this point of time, we believe the applicant has addressed most of the concerns that have been raised in our previous two reviews, and also the feedback received from the planning commission. So it is our recommendation that the planning commission grant site plan approval for the proposed brownstones on Main to be located at 1205 North Main, subject to the conditions that are listed in our regulations dated August 30th, being addressed on a revised and updated set of plans submitted for final administrative approval by staff. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Vidya. I just wanted to ask Attorney Crap, Vidya just brought this up. The original plan was a cluster of three and then two, and it was discovered that it couldn't be done that way under the existing ordinance, but we were wondering if there was any practicality, or is it too cumbersome to consider a change to that ordinance, Jeff? Or should we just proceed as we are right here?
Well, there's really a couple of different ways. One is to do exactly that. But keep in mind that if you added multiple family to that classification, that means that you're allowing it for that same zone throughout the city. One thing that they could do is a conditional rezone. If they, that might be a possibility to pick a zoning classification on residential multiple, for instance, that and just conditional, and seek conditional rezone. That would add time to the project, but that would that would allow, if approved, going through the process, that would allow a multiple-family structure to be put on that property.
And it would only apply to this project, then? That couldn't be used elsewhere in the city?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions for Vidya from the planning commission?
This is Commissioner King.
Sorry.
Vidya, I was looking at the first page of the plans, which lists the setbacks. And I know in your notes, item number three was the setbacks. It said five and fifteen on the sides. When I'm reading the plans, it says ten-foot side yard setback on the south side.
Correct.
Is there something that's missing there to get to the fifteen?
Uh, it's a combined side yard setback is fifteen. It's five feet on one side, combined side yard setback of fifteen. So basically, what it means is minimum is five, but they can have it as seven-point-five, seven-point-five, or they can have it as five and ten. The minimum combined has to be fifteen. So they have five on the north and ten along Ferndale for a total of fifteen.
Okay. So we're not seeing fifteen on that side, then?
No.
Okay. And then, I guess this isn't for Vidya, I guess more of a comment just about the plans and looking at the landscape plan. This is the first time that we've seen side views or elevations of the garage units. And I'm looking at the north and south elevations and then looking at the landscaping plan. And I just wanted to kind of point out that there is no landscaping that is along the south elevation of the garage. And so it is just a solid brick and stone wall. I think I personally would have liked to have seen something a little softer, something done there.
This is the garage walls you're talking about?
These are the garage walls, because if you look at the landscaping, the rows of arborvitae go along the parking spaces, it looks like, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it goes along the parking spaces and then the backyards. And then, you know, it's just sod. So this is the first time we see the elevations for the garages, and it's just going to be a solid, you know, a solid brick wall there.
That is a good point, Sarah. If I pulled up the plan, you can see this is the solid brick wall. There is no reason the applicant can't extend the arborvitae all the way along here, so in order to provide more visual relief to the city.
Yeah, whether it's arborvitae or there's some sort of landscaping, a tree, I think something really should be
Okay.
maybe something to break up the arborvitae, too. I do understand the reason for the arborvitae providing screening, and I think it's a good, you know, plant in many cases, but I think something to break that up would be nice, but to, you know, provide some landscaping there would be good to see. And then, my only other, I know you asked a question about how they're going to access the rooftops, and I had been, you know, I'd raised a question of where the mechanicals will be, so I'd like to hear that response. But I had one other question that I wanted to ask, or just raise, and that was, when I'm looking at the plans, it's just more for drainage. It looks like there is going to be some sort of drainage possibly going across the driveways. There's a lot of lot coverage here, and I just want to understand where the runoff is going to go. We've had some issues. I live off of this same commercial alley, but on the south side of Woodward. And the storm sewers are not, you know, they were put in for the capacity when many of these units didn't have, you know, large paved areas and large buildings on them. And the amount of water that's coming, just, they can't handle it. They're getting backed up. They're flooding garages. They're flooding yards. So I just wanted to see how the water issue is addressed here.
Great. Can you address that? He's already met with the engineers. They're having detention behind the garages, so he can address it when you guys.
Yeah, I can address that. There's going to be underground retention on-site. Since we're on the hill, there will be some drop from the alley into our property, so we'll maintain all water that comes onto the site will stay on the site. And we'll be connecting our, all the downspouts, which will be internal downspouts. Anything from the roof runoff will also go into the retention and is addressed on that first site plan.
And the volume of detention is set by the city engineer?
Correct. Hundred-year capability.
While we have you, Commissioner King's first question was about the garage. I'm assuming she's talking about the furthest north garage, north wall, and the furthest south garage, south wall.
For the furthest north garage unit, there, as part of the landscaping agreement we had with the owner to the north, there is currently, we planted three Austrian pines, I believe, up on this hill here to block. He has a dumpster back here just past the property line, so we have some Austrian pines in there, so that will protect the northern view. On the southern view, there is a large maple tree almost directly across from the garage units, as you can see right there. We don't have an issue, per se, to add additional landscaping to that, to soften that up. That's not, you know, it is only a single-story garage unit. So, but we can soften it up. We can look at putting a pine or something in there to break up the line of the arborvitae, if that's agreeable to the commissioner.
Commissioner King, does that answer the questions you had?
Yeah, I was really only concerned with the south side, and I think that would be a good plan. I didn't see the maple there on the, across the sidewalk, too. But I think having something there would be good to break it up.
Thank you. Any other questions while we have Mr. Schneider up here?
Mr. Schneider, how will the rooftop mechanical units access?
By a ladder. It's, it'll be about two stories, but it'll be via ladder. There will be no public access from inside the unit.
Okay. Okay, at this point, this is again scheduled for a public hearing tonight, and I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:41. Gianna, earlier, you had someone on the line. Have they come back to talk to us right now?
Yes, I did contact the city earlier. My name is Steve Gerson, G-U-R-S-I-N.
Good evening, sir.
And happy to be here. Thank you. Just had a question, and I'm guessing that it's already been answered. So I apologize if I'm backtracking, but how would I find out more about the potential parking impact along Ferndale?
Vidya, I don't know. That's not a condition of this site plan. I don't know what we would expect.
You can park on Ferndale now, so nothing would change.
So there's no restricted parking along there?
And they're self-parked on their own site. They have adequate parking for each unit, so I'm not sure of the question.
The question is in regard to, yes, each unit has parking set aside across the five units, but in anticipation of real-world use, we're looking at relatives coming over, guests, visitors, et cetera. Where are those people to park? It's only natural that Ferndale is the first choice, hence a proposed impact on parking along Ferndale. Has that been studied? How can I find out more about the results of said study?
Right, so if I may, this is Nick Banda from the administration. So on Ferndale is all the single-family homes. They have one- and two-car garages. And when they have people over, people park on Ferndale. This would be absolutely no different than your neighbors, if you live there, parking. And I happen to go there once a week to the dog room, or so. People, Kathy has her kids park out in Ferndale all day long, and then the neighbors do also when they have guests, so I'm not, there's no traffic study, because they are reading their own parking on-site, just like the individual homes have two-car garages, just like this does, so I'm not sure. There's no extra study done. They're residential units, just like the homes on Ferndale.
If it will help, Mr. Gerson?
Yes.
Project is providing ten garages for the ten units, so in addition to that, each of the driveways is designed to accommodate two cars. So technically, the applicant is providing three parking spaces per unit. So it is hoped that any guest who comes will pull into the driveway behind the homeowners' two cars and park there on the site itself. But like Mr. Banda said, any overflow parking would probably go on to whatever the existing street parking is.
Okay, so in addition to the garages, and again, I'm doing this from memory because the site plan is not up on the screen. It's not being shared right now. Is there some sort of driveway area, if you will, separate from the garages?
I am sharing the site plan right now. I hope you can see it.
Yes, I can.
Each of the garage units has got space for one car, and then the driveway length is thirty-six feet. So parking space depth required is eighteen feet, so technically, two cars can park back-to-back in tandem. So he's got a total of twenty spaces just in the driveway area and ten additional spaces.
Okay, unfortunately, I would probably have to give you an example. Hopefully, it's a valid one. One of the proposed residents in one of the buildings has two cars parked and is expecting a visitor. Visitor would normally, or naturally, park on Ferndale, correct?
They can park behind the second car. What happens at a home on Ferndale with a one-car garage? They park either behind their cars in the garage or on Ferndale. Exact same situation.
Okay, now I can see that the garage holds one, and there's spots in that driveway for two. Okay. Honestly, everybody, thank you. It's, you know, it's a lot to take in at one time, and my concern, of course, was the parking, and I think this addresses it well. But again, just the question, there's no proposed change to the parking rules, regulations, et cetera, on Ferndale right now. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you all. No more questions.
Thank you very much for calling in. We appreciate you taking the time to do that.
Yes, sir.
Gianna, anyone else?
Yes, hold on one second. Hello? Hello?
Hi, I'm, hi, I have a question. I'm not, I can't see what's on there.
We have your name?
Hi, sure. My name is Melissa.
Hi, Melissa. Welcome.
Hi. So I live in Glendale, and my backyard would face this building. So since I can't see, I'm not, I can't, I'm on my phone. What is the architecture of these apartments or condos? And if so, what is the architecture, and then which part would face the alley?
Mr. Schneider, would you like to answer the question on what type of architecture it is?
The architecture is traditional brownstone. Typically, what you would probably see in inner-city Baltimore, Washington, and Chicago. The only thing you're going to see from the alleyway is the garages. So the garages would protect the back of the building of the brownstones in the front on Main Street. The property only goes to the property line of the Ferndale residents, you know, to the west of us. So we don't really, if you're on Glendale, you shouldn't see anything different than what you're seeing today, which is the property, the commercial property to the north.
Okay. Can you hear me now or no?
Yes, we can.
Okay. How many levels is the building? Two, then?
Two and a half.
Two and a half. Okay. Okay. And then, will there be dumpsters at the back toward the parking lot, toward the, on the alley side?
No, there will not be. Residential trash cans on trash day home.
Oh, perfect. Okay. That sounds great. And then, what is the proposed date for this project to begin?
Soon as possible. We've already, just to be clear, we've already started our engineering. Our engineering should be submitted to the city this week. So we have a fast timeline on this as of right now.
Okay, sounds great. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Melissa. Thanks for calling. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
The public hearing is open. Anyone? Uh, the public hearing is open. Anyone else, uh, waiting to speak, Sienna?
No.
Okay. All right. Uh, and we have no other written communications about this project as well.
No, we do not.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, I, Vito Pamplona, the property owner to the north of the office building, called me this morning. He was out of town. He couldn't get a quick note, said that he was a hundred percent in favor of this development as proposed. Wanted you, you to know that the agreement that Mr. Schneider agreed to the re-landscaping, to take the burn down to gray and then Greg Spokes came back in and reestablished the burn. Again, he reiterated that's on his property, his maintenance to take care of. Uh, but he was happy and thankful to Plan Commission for working with the developer to come up with some of these, um, different looks and, and soften the site. And he was in a hundred percent, quote unquote, a hundred percent agreement in moving this forward.
And would you tell us his name once again?
Yes, sir. Vito Pamplona is the owner of the office building.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
And Mr. Chair, can I ask a question, I guess of, uh, the, the commission?
Yes, please.
Um, i- i- is there any interest in, um, moving forward, trying to ensure that we come to an agreement with developers? Maybe a written agreement that comes along with, uh, with the approval of the project that, um, requires them to have some sort of deadline for completion of the project? And, and maybe Attorney Crott can weigh in as to whether that's legal. I know we have like triggers that happen that require that they move along at a certain pace, but I'm wondering if we can tighten that up at all.
Well, I guess this is Eric. Um, what, what, what would you have in mind in, in terms of timelines? I'd be interested to.
Well, I, I guess I'd like to, I guess I'd like to have that discussion, but, um, you know, it, as an example, how long could this project go on if it, if, you know, they meet within one year getting an engineering, uh, you know, uh, started on it and then submitting that to the city? And then is it, does it, is the project extended for another year? Could it, how long could this go on before it gets completed? What's the standard process on that? Because it seems to me like some of these projects can just keep going on forever.
Do you have, are you there?
I am. So, you know, the city has taken the approach that as long as there's some work being done to proceed, to move the project forward, that there isn't, uh, there isn't a hard deadline. There isn't a hard deadline, uh, for completion in the ordinance. I would, uh, you know, I, I, I think there's certain benchmarks. I think I, the, the city's done of, if it's not done by X to come in and discuss the project and you know, it's not uncommon for an approved, uh, site plan, a project, a project with approved site plan to never get built. Um, you know, but then it does end up expiring. They do have to come in. In fact, case in point to this project, right? And there was, uh, approved site plan a couple of, one or, once or twice. Um, and it, and it changed and it, you know, the property stays the same until it, until it doesn't. So, um, you know, there isn't anything hard in the, um, in the, uh, the, the ordinance book. I don't know, Nick, uh, uh, did I, did I say that right as far as i- i- when you look at this from a development standpoint, if they're making progress, there's no hard timeline that the city's ever put in place.
Right. So our, our, it's a, and it's a fair question, especially in these days and ages where we've seen some homes that were constructed by individuals take three years to build. So the way the ordinance officially is written, the building code says, if you do not touch the ground for six months, then the building permit is expired. And then we would kick into that next step to restore the property back to original, uh, gray and grass, but, uh,
Yeah, cause site plan also expires if they don't do anything as any year.
In one year, right? And then it does, but on multiple, uh, they kept going. Every five, five months and thirty days, they would keep that thing going and boot the opportunity to, what Councilman Block was asking. So, um, I, I think a fair question with the developer is what's his timeframe? How does he see this building out? And, and that might help us understand what to expect anyway.
Got a question for me, Nick?
It's Mr. Chairman, like that, yes.
Please.
Uh, then the intent right now is that, uh, 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 we are looking at two buildings, two buildings right away, two out of three buildings right away. Um, and it just makes sense the way the garages are set up. The two northern buildings would be the most likely. Um, so to kind of address Dean, no, no developer wants to sit on vacant property once the property's been started. It costs money to sit on something. So I'm in agreement. I'd like to finish it too if we start it. Um, uh, but the way we're, the way we're doing it to kind of address your concerns specifically on my project at least is that, uh, we're not, we're not doing one to the north, one to the south and filling in the middle as we go along. We're, we're actually, uh, doing it in a consistent manner where the property is built out, um, from north to south um, in a logical fashion. So if, if, if we go into recession, um, people can't get mortgages anymore, property, you know, holds off, we don't have to build another building. Um, I know that's not necessarily what you want to hear, but you know, being considerate of the city, we're not putting a bunch of holes in the ground. Um, and just building the whole thing all at once. Uh, the market still has to dictate. It's a, it's millions of dollars. It's not, you know, it's not five hundred thousand. It's not a million. Millions of dollars, um, for, for the entire project, um, to be put up.
Uh, I have a question then. At what phase would the underground stormwater detention system be put in?
I, well, it has to go in first. I cannot, I cannot get a CFO and sell a unit if I don't have my underground.
Okay. Go in first. You need verification.
I, you know, I, I appreciate that honesty on, on how the project might come together and sort of the financing of it. It do- it does sort of raise a couple of questions for me, uh, on that. I'm picturing a, a scenario where the, say the first building is built. And then if we go into recession, we're sort of left with the facade of that, you know, southerly, if you started from the north, you know, this southerly elevation for potentially a long time. You know, I guess I, I hadn't thought that this was going to be a phased development. I thought it was all going to go in at one time.
It, it will. Uh, well, it, it won't go, I won't go, I won't take five holes to answer your question. Um, A, it would take several, you know, I'd be moving my trades around fairly, you know. If the pre-sold are there, yes, we've built, we, we could do it. Uh, the, the likely, the way we set up the buildings, uh, per the ordinance and how the buildings will, will be built is we're going to build the first two. That's kind of what we're, we've committed. My partner and I have committed to at this point. So you would get a, it, it would look complete. It wouldn't look like if, like you wouldn't look, be looking at a, a blank wall. Um, and I think that's your concern, that you would look at, um, a brick wall, which is our firewall. If you, if we only built one, we'd have a firewall to the south on that, on the northernmost building. So the idea is not to do that. It's to make it as most attractive as possible and build the two together.
But the, the elevation, the southerly elevation of that second building is still going to be a brick wall, right? Am I missing?
No, because I have a firewall in between. So if you look at the site plan, I have a three foot, um, separation between building one and building two, and we count the buildings from the north going south. Um, that has to be a brick wall because of, because of, it's my firewall. Um, and that's why they're close together, closer together too. So, so the windows on the, on building number one to the north would, the windows would be on the north side. And then on building two, directly south of that, the windows would be on the south side.
Got it. Okay. So it would look like building five, the south side of building five?
Correct. Uh, building one, we, we're, we're counting the buildings from north to south. So building one would look, would look, if you, if you built one and two together, they look like a nice building together. They, you know, that's intent. When, when we originally proposed the property, a- as was discussed earlier, we wanted to combine the two northern buildings together and the three southern buildings together. But because of the zoning doesn't work and our timeframe doesn't work to change the zone, you know, to go through the process of trying to get a conditional change for this. Um, we, we desire, we designed it where we, you know, going in on this, that we were always looking at this two northern buildings first to be built first. You know, even if it was one building or two, it would all, those would always be built first. And it provides, and it provides a nice open area still for, that's going to be grass and open and stuff like that, even if we hit two thousand and eight again, which I, you know, God help us. I don't want to live through another two thousand and eight.
So this, so, so this elevation that we're looking at here would be the south elevation of second.
That would be the southern elevation, um, of building two. It says building five, but it would also be the elevation for building two.
Okay.
Basically anywhere the building separation is five feet, there will be windows on the wall on the south side. And the separation is three feet, there's firewall. Both are firewalls. So if buildings, the northern two buildings are built, it'll at least give a finished appearance even on its south side and the rest of the lot will look like a park, MSU.
Correct, correct.
Is that noted on the drawing?
If you scroll the next, if you scroll the next page, it shows elevation two.
Right. The applicant did clarify. Last time I had asked them, Mr. Schneider, to specify which would be the south elevation of which building and those notes are on the site.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just to kind of follow up on my, my question, my thought. Um, it, it does, you know, we, we do have to consider that, um, if the applicant's intent, initial intent is to do the two buildings and, and, and consider the market and all of that. Um, I'm not saying anything bad is going to happen, but in the worst case scenario, then you're going to have a phased project. Um, that impacts people in the neighborhood. I mean, this is the same sort of discussions we're having about the, the riverfront project and, um, it just seems to me like I don't think we're doing enough at the planning commission to, uh, try to protect the residents, taxpaying residents of, uh, of our city from perpetual, possible perpetual projects or half-finished projects or um, undeadlined projects that could go on for years and, uh, and it's concerning.
Nick, what's our experience been with unfinished projects in your time here?
Say that again, Mr. Chairman.
What has been the city's experience such as this with unfinished projects, eyesore and?
We have, we haven't had one yet, but, but in the last years, we haven't built much.
Suave trees that we don't have unfinished project?
What's that?
They tore down hundreds of trees and we have a field that people complain about all the time.
Yeah, that, that was not, and he asked if there's construction started. They didn't do any construction. That was a cleanable problem.
Okay.
Uh, but I mean, in a whole, I will say residential homes have stretched out a long time. What, the one on Glendale, I think, is three years. So we haven't had a lot of circumstances like this, but it's a, it's legit concern for sure. I mean, the best you could do is, that is a complete second south face and then the grass that's all back to grass. Like right now it's grass. So kind of.
The, the Mosheri project where we had a building that we had tax revenue on, the building was demolished and the project is at a standstill and we're sitting on a fallow field, getting fallow field tax revenue for it.
Well, same with.
The project where there was trees taken down and have never been replaced when they were contracted to replace them years ago. It's, we, we've got the overlook project that yes, hasn't started, but it's sitting there vacant. Right. Again and again, I'm just saying that at some point we have to take some responsibility for this.
Right. And to your point, this project, there were two homes that are paying taxes before Mr. Schneider even got it, I believe that they were torn down and nothing's happened there too. So it does happen. I mean, I, I don't know legally, uh, Attorney Crott, what cities can do to enforce, unless if it's a special project, that's different. This is a site plan. So I'm not sure what we can do legally. I, I, I don't disagree with you, sir.
I, I have a question. This is Commissioner Clark Martin.
Please.
Um, Nick, will you tell me once again, um, we don't have anything in our ordinance that manages timeline for, for these properties, only in special projects? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there, what are our options?
I think that's what our Councilman Block was asking for a little bit of discussion about what are, you know, what could we do? And stay within our bounds legally and, um, Attorney Crott's going to have to weigh in on that.
Can we tie it to a motion?
Definitely.
I mean, that's a, I, I guess what, what was your thought? I mean, if it's a, a comeback, you know, part of a, a motion to come back to, I guess, show cause why things haven't moved or is it a, is the thought, uh, to revoke site plan approval? If it's not a certain, I, I, I just, it's hard to answer that without knowing where you wanted to go with that. Um, you know, we, I think some years ago, we looked at the, the possibility of adding timelines uh, to projects. Uh, and we can certainly revisit, uh, that and bring back, uh, Nick and I think looked at that some, some years ago and happy to do that again. Um, but without knowing, I, I, are you looking at a hard deadline where if it's not, the project's not done in a year, you're, you lose site plan, that's going to be more problematic than if you're not done with, you know, the first four buildings, uh, it, for instance, using this project, uh, then come back to show cause, you know, why you haven't made progress. That's, that's different. So I guess answering that question is, is what do you mean, can we put a deadline? What, what deadline are you?
What, we're, we're talking about a development agreement for another project. Is there no way that we can get some sort of signed development agreement, um, with most applicants that are looking to do projects of, you know, a certain size that are going to possibly require multiple phases?
Well, yeah, I mean, we can consider that.
Way we can format that?
I, 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 I wouldn't say there's no way to do that. Are you talking about a hard deadline, you lose site plan approval if you're not done with certain point X? I, I, I guess I'm trying to get an idea of what your, what your end goal is if they don't meet whatever deadline you're referring to.
My end goal is to try to put some sort of document or agreement in place that doesn't allow for some of the stuff that's been happening to continue to happen and to have some protections that, um, you know, as, as, as we discussed earlier with, uh, with Riverfront that, you know, in, in that case, there's a bond that will possibly be in place that will allow us to return the, the um, project to, or the property to its, uh, current form. You know, it, it wouldn't probably have to be that aggressive on something like this, but can we not, you know, to some compromise?
I think it should be something like that to, to me. I, I, I think it would be interesting to look at how other communities handle performance bonds and development agreements. I think that would be an interesting exercise because I, I believe that it's not uncommon for prior to, to beginning construction, that the financial assurances needed, need to be provided for that phase of construction. That would handle the cost of construction. So what becomes important then is the phasing of the project. You know, so if we're, if we're talking about this project being phased, then the financial assurances would be, need to be posted for that phase of the project. And maybe that's two buildings, not, you know, the rest. Maybe it needs to be phased. I, 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 I feel like this, this project really should have, have a phased plan to it or should be treated as, as such. But I think it would be interesting exercise, see how other communities handle posting of performance bonds and financial assurances. Cause I think we might find that, um, there's maybe more that we can do there to protect. And then the other thing is not starting construction until those things are in hand. You know, if I, I, I wasn't a part of the, the Suave development, but if there was, or, or even the Mosheri development, if, if that building was demolished prior to, and that was sort of demolished as the start of construction to a project that hasn't really proceeded, I don't know that we should have allowed the demolition prior to if that was, if that's what the issue is, right? But, but those are things that, you know, should be in check prior to, and I apologize for the applicants. I think we're kind of getting off page here a little bit, but, um, I think there's, there's things to discuss, Dean.
Thank you.
Chairman? If, if I may just provide, uh, some insight in the, in my experience in other communities where I do planning work, we require a performance guarantee for every single site plan that is approved, principal permitted use or not. If it goes before the planning commission, a performance bond is required. The performance bond is a small percentage of the cost of the project, not the cost of the project. It's a small percentage of the cost and, um, of course in my client. It's a small percentage of the cost and, um, of course, in my client, that particular client, the projects that generally are big ticket numbers. So even the small percentage ends up being a significant amount. That said, our zoning ordinance does have section two nine zero five, performance guarantee, which states that any project that requires approvals from planning commission, you can require a performance bond or a performance guarantee. It is not limited only to special projects. So I would defer to Attorney Clark, we do have specific A, B, C subsections under section two nine zero five, which states that you can require a performance bond or a performance guarantee to get a project done. So it's not that you don't have it in your ordinance, it's just that I'm not sure it's been used before. So if the planning commission is concerned, rather than write up some new regulations, you already have it in your ordinance. Then after Attorney Clark's input on how you would like to go about applying.
I, I do believe that we, we came to the conclusion about performance bonds that we could do them. I think, uh, Mr. Vak was, um, statement now was more of a, a timing like deadlines and versus the, the what if then, right? Is can we actually implement deadlines and what are the consequences which goes into the, the guarantee? So I, and I, you know, Commissioner Lord's suggestion of a, of a survey of surrounding areas, uh, or lake communities, I think would be a beneficial one, uh, to give information to this, to this commission for sure.
Are there any limitations in the state law, the planning law relative to this subject?
Have to look into it to see, um, I've come across a lot of performance guarantee requirement, but I'm not sure. I have come across where a developer is told you have to finish it within a certain time. I believe the performance guarantee itself is the incentive for the developer to finish. After all, you're holding their money and they would like their money back, so they finish the project and take the money back. So I have not seen a project where a developer has told you, because there are lots of factors that play into construction, you know, availability of materials, whether their subcontractors are available, whether, you know, temporarily due to weather or other reasons they are unable to proceed as on schedule. There are lots of things that can interfere with actual construction act. So I believe, I believe the performance guarantee is the incentive for the developer to finish in a timely fashion. I've not seen a timeline set saying you have to finish it by then.
Yeah, I think when Commissioner Clark Martin asked me about, she was talking specifically about timeframes and that's, I knew that wasn't in there, but. Um, so I agree, I, I don't know if we can do that.
My only concern is that we treat everyone fairly and we've just approved a large project with a performance bond requirement. At least we're hoping that the city council delivers on that recommendation. I, if we're going to do this, I think we should do it for everybody. And, uh, again, it's going to take some study and people know a lot more than us to decide. You know, what are the terms of a performance bond? Is it intent, the intent to give the city the money to be able to finish the project, which doesn't seem practical to me? Or to eliminate a, a, a blank that has emerged and return, return it to the condition it was before site plan approved? So, um, I guess my thought is that we, we need to rely on Jeff and the administration to promptly give us a recommendation as how we can flesh out that existing condition that Vidya just pointed out in our ordinance so that we deal with this on all of these projects.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that and I think maybe city council should take a look at it as well. But I mean, I think, yeah, we, we have all this, but I mean, I think what Mayor Pro Tem Vak was saying is, you know, a lot of this stuff is kind of vague. And, and for example, like the Suave thing, well, we, we want to be good guys about it. We don't want to exercise it because there's something coming down the line and then it never comes down the line and then look like we're, you know, letting them get away with stuff and people don't like what's going on. And as you said, there's a number of those out there. So I think we need to, you know, ma- maybe have something, as we always say, to give administration some teeth. Say, let's do it and, and with, with, with houses too, because there's, you know, there's how, we all have examples of, especially some of these big houses that have gone on for years and that, that just doesn't seem fair. And then of course, you know, if there's a recession, I mean, that's another issue. So again, I know we're getting off topic of this one, but I, I would like to, at least on this project, I would like to see a performance bond. I think it's probably unfair to create a policy right now just for this project on the timing of it. But I think that's something we need to look at as soon as possible.
I think this is a transitional thing. I, by that, I mean, we're kind of growing up as a city. We didn't have all these huge projects before and we're learning perhaps even the hard way. You know, that we've got to tighten up our game and there's nothing wrong with that. There's nothing wrong with that, we just need the professional advice from Jeff and the administration in terms of what that should be, that we get it right.
I, I have a question just for Jeff. It, you know, there just, if there's can be an instrument that we have a way to manage the expectations in a very fair way, because we have a responsibility to, you know, the, our residents, but then we also want to be supportive of development. So a way to manage it, like if, if, if we know that and, and we can, you know, say, okay, this is going to be a planned, a, a phased development, you know, how do we? I know that there's performance and timeline put together, I'm just not sure legally how, what that document is. So that we can ma- just manage the expectations of any project in a realistic manner.
That, that's, that's a fair point and I think that that could, uh, that would be a good project for, you know, administration to kind of wrestle with and bring back before you. Um, I know that in the past, the project specific, not to be too big, the project specific, uh, people have asked, what is the timeline for this and what is the timeline for that? And there's nothing wrong with asking a developer, um, those questions. And we've also, my recollection is we've, we've called developers back in front of planning commission to say, why, why isn't this moving? And, you know, developers don't want to come back either, uh, they want to do their project. I think that's a fair question to ask of, of developers is tell us what your planned timeline is and say if you don't do this, then, you know, assuming that we don't come up with other, uh, things like, you know, tapping a, a, a bond to clear it. Because that's a pretty dramatic step, uh, but, you know, at least a, a come in to show cause, you know, why this project doesn't move. Because it shows that the, the city is monitoring this project, not just letting it lay fallow for years and years. But, uh, it, it has a, a modicum of, of, uh, you know, uh, requirements to come back and explain themselves and if there's changes or not moving the project, then we know that the project's dead. And at least at that point, they can put some, uh, some clues on it that, that way as well.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? The public hearing is still open, by the way, and if, uh, there are no others, I'm going to close the public hearing. We'll call it held and closed at eight eighteen. Uh, the discussion can continue. I'm, I'm just curious from Christian and Eric and Matt. You, you three are involved in building big things in your daily life. Do you see this? Do you see this issue come up a lot?
So this is Christian. I, um, you know, subsequent to the last meeting in the past couple of weeks, you know, the, the concept of a development agreement is certainly not novel or unique and it's obviously used throughout. You know, there's, there's lots of examples online, there's lots of examples locally that I know for a fact cities have used. Um, and it's really a function of contract. It's a function of what is negotiated between the city and the developer. And it contains information such as milestone dates, penalties for failure to perform, you know, updating the city as to progress. I mean, it's, it really the sky is the limit. So is it something that's used regularly? I'd say probably not, but it's certainly something that I think the city should consider, um, moving forward. And, and Mr. Chairperson, I agree with you. I think it's, um, it's, it's a good practice now to maybe start looking at a more formal policy as more developments come and as we become more sophisticated. And frankly, as the availability of developments start to become more, you know, limited for lack of a better term, there's only so much dirt that you can build on here and it becomes more scarce. I think if we're going to do it, it should be done in a way that balances both the developers' needs and wants to that of the city and the president's needs and wants. So it's, they're not mutually exclusive.
Yeah, I think from my perspective, I, I think where I, where I typically see development agreements are when you're in zoning districts like planned unit developments or special districts that allow some discretion from the zoning ordinance by the commissioner, by the council. That's where I, I, I would typically see development agreements and they spell out what those conditions are and they can attach whatever terms you want to attach to them. When, when somebody's developing a piece of property that's zoned appropriately, so it's a straight zoning, it's, you're really bound by the ordinance and you're following what's written in the ordinance. Now, you know, performance bonds and those sort of financial assurances are, are a little bit different and some, and can be, can be a separate topic. They're not, one is not necessarily tied to the other. You can have a financial assurances and per- performance bonds and those sort of guarantees that are required for every development. You know, it's something that needs to be posted prior to the pre-construction meeting and then, you know, and then on you go, you know, because somebody can, you, you want to make sure that they're financially capable to, um, complete the project. So, so that's, that's not uncommon on, on any project. But development agreements are typically on the, more of the discretionary zoning.
What you're saying it'd be in the interest of this city if we moved promptly in that direction?
I, I, I think it would be, I, I'm not an expert on it, I will tell you, but what I would tell you is it's not uncommon in a lot of the communities where I've done work and I think it's certainly something that we should look to some of the other communities and see how they're handling it. And, and come up with a recommendation, I think that's appropriate.
Matt, do you see this in your business?
Uh, Dennis, most of the work that we bid is, uh, private. And as such, if we don't perform and complete the projects, we don't even get invited back for future projects. Uh, the work that we bid to public entities typically is a, uh, fully designed project by a AEW or similar, uh, architecture engineering firm, uh, bid direct to a city that we always have to provide a bid bond and a performance bond for. Uh, we don't do a whole lot of development, uh, through our own company. But I do know in other cities and talking with various people in similar planning commission type roles that they do require performance bonds for developer projects.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairperson, this is Christian. What, what Matt also has indicated too, is that when they do private work, sometimes there's liquidated damage provisions in contracts. So if they don't perform within a certain amount of time and there's not a reasonable excuse for that delay, the owner would assess a, a monetary penalty against that contractor for failing to complete the job within a set time. And those can be, you know, a function of a graduated penalty where it starts off slow and then increases over time or it's a fixed rate not to exceed. So that's in the private context, but you know, from a developer city, um, situation, I don't think it's uncalled for, certainly unrealistic to have a little bit something else in there that still has a, a little bit of a hammer over the developer's head to make sure that the job continues to progress the way it was intended to. So everyone's happy, not just the city, but the developer and obviously the surrounding neighbors.
So Jeff, I, I guess we look to you and probably Nick to shepherd this thing and if you could get back to us, uh, when you can and.
Absolutely.
We'll, we'll see if we can carry it forward. Vidya pointing out that we already have language in the ordinance helps substantially.
For sure.
And we could actually use that in a motion tonight, I believe, uh, in a site plan approval motion. So, uh, with that, uh, Dean, thanks for pushing on this. It, uh, you know, you brought it to the forefront and we'll see if we can't do something specific about it for, uh, projects in the future.
I, I appreciate, uh, folks chiming in and having a, having a meaningful conversation about it. I do, I really do, thanks.
Okay. Uh, we have before us a recommendation for a site plan approval on this project with conditions. Does anyone want to make a motion?
This is Commissioner King, before we're making a motion, I just want to clarify, if we're looking at this as a phased project, should we be approving, you know, the first phase of the site plan? And then, and a bond to go along with that? Or should we be, you know, because the, the cost is going to be considerably different, I would imagine. And if we're, you know, the developer might want to weigh in on this, would they rather come back, you know, for the, for the second phase?
In other words, do you want site plan approval for the whole thing tonight or?
I want to say. Your idea of what phased is and what my idea is what phases are, it sounds like two different things.
And driven by.
My phasing is that I ha- I have a, uh, a certain pad, uh, that I have, uh, that I have to put vehicles on, uh, subcontractors on, I have, uh, underground work that has to be completed and the project has to go one by one to do that. Um, so you call it, what I call phased is when you have a hundred unit subdivision and they're splitting it up into three phases of thirty-three units per phase. This isn't that program. This is, this, this, this development from start to finish should be, you know, a short term, uh, a shorter term development is, you know, each unit takes time to build, um, just as a house would or anything else like that. So to me, my answer to it should be, it should be, um, approved as presented, um, and, and, uh, as a full, as a full site plan. Just as you would any other site plan that has been brought to the city since I've been here. Been coming.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question following up on that response by Mr. Schneider. So once you break ground on what we're calling the northern two buildings, how many months or days from commencement of construction will it take to build and finish both those first two structures?
The first two structures to build?
In, in the site, in the site building work, yep.
Well, depending on weather and, and available trades and things like that, it's, it's going to take under a year. Build just those two, if I only build those two and I don't continue to the third building, the fourth building and the fifth building during that same process.
Okay, so if assuming cash flow is good and you start buildings three, four and five, what is the total project likely?
Well, uh, an average building of this size should, should be built with weather concerns and things like that. Should take nine months to build a single building if all I was going to build is a single build. So as you, as you phase those over time or over the course of the project, as you move through each, each phase, you know, you, you have to add that in. So I mean, you could put in any timeframe, you could say, okay, after the first three months, I'm going to build, you know, the next, start the next unit. And it could be a month, it could be two months, depends on, uh, various factors, snow, how much snow do we get this week? You know, that, that.
But it's in your interest to build this building as fast as possible once you sell it.
I have already, uh, yes, I, not, not, we're, and not even necessarily even sell it. Our intent is to build, if, once we break ground, we, our intention is to build them as fast as possible and move out it as quickly as possible. This is all cash that we have in this project. This isn't, this isn't some finance project, this is physical dollars putting in. I'm spending money, um, uh, right now out of pocket for approval I don't even have for engineering. I'm, I'm already moving the ball forward on, this is cash in.
So if you build just two buildings, I heard twelve months or less is what I heard. And then I did not hear a final answer for the whole site and all five buildings.
Well, it, it depends on, it depends on how things, how fast things move. I, I, it could, for the whole site, it could be two years, uh, total. Could be three, if we hit a recession, if nothing, if everybody, if, if it's two thousand and eight. If you've ever take, if you're a developer and you built something, that's two thousand and two thousand and eight happens again, who knows? If there's, if the banks aren't lending, no one's buying.
Right, and that's why we would like a performance bond, so we're not staring at an empty site.
I mean, you could be staring at an empty site right now too. I mean, if, if.
We, we are.
If you don't, if you're. If you twist, right, and it'll continue to be an empty site. If you, if you push the developer to the point of, of already putting money, more money in on top of something, that, that is unnecessary, it is unnecessary on a site like this. I've heard, I've heard the projects that you have concerns on. Those projects are ten times the size, the Suave property alone is humongous. I understand that, that, and I believe that was a special use project too, down there. Did you ask for a performance bond there? Have you asked for a performance bond anywhere through this process through up until this point? Do you have a history? Are you, are you identifying our project to start off with a performance bond?
No, we did this with
My name is Mosheri or Swabe?
Well, we did it with Randazzo.
So I, without, you know, again, I've lived here all my life. I, even though I live in Rochester Hills, Rochester is fifty-six years of my, of my living here. I know the town. I'm not, I'm not looking to make a, a bad site. We're, we're looking to make, to move the city forward in providing housing that's, that's requested within the city. Now, if you're, if you, if you want to stall or delay that process, then, I mean, that's kind of sounds like what you're doing on this project. Because you're bringing up something that has it, that you don't even, that I'm hearing you say that you don't even have really a handle on and how you want to handle it, but you're going to put limitations on my project when we, when we should be here for, you know, a yes or no approval.
I'm trying to get you to the yes, we're trying to get your project built and completed and get your cash for you. Assurances that you're not going to build one building.
I don't, it costs me money to build one build. If I, if I only build one building, it's not worth me building. I have more money in the property than it is going to be to build one build.
So could I suggest someone try a motion? And see if we can flush something out here that's reasonable?
This is Commissioner King. I'm not going to make a motion yet, but I really do like this project and I want to see, you know, a way that it gets done. I think Mr. Schneider did raise a good point. We've had a lot of discussions about the performance bond. We did require it, you know, on, for the first time on a much larger project. But based on the discussions, I don't think we have a great handle on it. And, you know, I think it's hard for us to require that suddenly on this project without having, you know, a full understanding of the impact, how it's actually going to be executed, what assurances it really gives us and, and the benefit. And then, you know, potentially we're delaying or, you know, disincentivizing somebody from moving forward with a project. So, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about a motion that has something. If, you know, Mr. Schneider only builds two buildings, would I like to see the rest of the property turned into grass or something? So we're not looking at it for the next five, six years? Absolutely. But I'm, I just don't know how we, you know, build that into a motion.
I'm not sure either, based on how he has to handle his personal finances. I mean, we could end up creating requirements that could put him under. And I sure don't want to see that either. I mean, none of us can control the economy and God knows there's uncertainty out there. And I also don't want to design a new ordinance on the back of a project here. We have, we'll have plenty more in the future to do this with. I'm suggesting that grant site plan approval, but I ask that whatever the motion is, does include the, the segment or the section that Vidya cited that allows us to require a performance bond. And that'll have to be worked out with the administration and the city council in the future so that we do have at least a tie in the, in this case where it's, it's stated in the motion that there has to be a performance bond. But the phasing, I think, just over complicates this project.
Mr. Chairman, so question?
Yes.
So do we meet a financial bond or a performance bond? Or which, well, I guess those are two different
It's over my head. I can't even answer that. I just don't know.
So, so I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mayor Vic said it and then Chairman McGee, that was my point. I, I don't feel like we have, you know, a clear path on that. So I don't see how we can make that a requirement at this time.
May I provide some clarification?
Yes.
This is not a phased project at all. It's, it's a small site. Mr. Schneider is putting in the entire underground detention system and infrastructure in one go. Typically in a phased project, even the infrastructure moves along with the different phases. He is going to be investing a significant amount of money in the underground infrastructure, which itself will necessitate that he builds as many buildings as he can in order to get a financial return from the property. Otherwise, he's just dumping a whole lot of money on which he's not going to get returns. This does not meet what we call a phased plan at all. Phased plan is something that is of, that is of a significant size where including the infrastructure and the utility development is sectioned off. In this case, all the utilities, basic infrastructure is going to be in place. It's just that the actual physical structures are going to be built one by one as they are completed, which is not unusual in this. So I would not recommend a phased. That said, the performance bond that you can require, it can be based on the ordinance section that I cited. It can be just a letter of credit or a surety. I don't think that will, that's something developers typically provide. It won't be taking away cash from Mr. Schneider's actual investment in the property. It is just showing you that he's got the capability. It's like a bank certificate or a surety or a letter of credit that says he's got the wherewithal to actually finish this project. So my suggestion is, since you have not nailed down the exact language, any recommendation you make for approval can be subject to a performance bond as discussed with the city attorney. So that attorney crack can see what exactly the language of the ordinance is till we flesh it out and have a concrete requirement for future projects. In this case, something that will give the city a level of comfort that this project will be completed in a regular phase. You could also add a condition.
Would someone want to try to put that in a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The one we don't do it by phase, we pass the entire site plan approval. You know, the, the letter of credit and stuff, that's fine, but I think we should have, and again, it'd be a lot smaller, that if the project doesn't get completed, there's money to, you know, tear it down and get it back to save. Now, obviously that would be a lot less than the Randazzo project. And, you know, hopefully that doesn't happen, but I think to have a little bond to protect the city. One, we, it's not the first time, so we're not adversely doing that and we're not saying it has to be the entire project. It just has to be the, the tear down value is like Mr. Hauser had said earlier. So that's the motion I made.
Okay. How about like landscaping the rest of the site if it only gets two built and the rest of it sits there?
I was thinking that exact same thing.
Okay.
May I just suggest that you don't say the performance guarantee is for tear down? Because if Mr. Schneider completes two buildings and there are four residents in, you don't want to tear those buildings down. You can see a performance guarantee in the amount necessary to restore the unfinished portions of the site back to its original condition. That way he'll be required to put in grass and landscaping and keep
In nego, in negotiation with developer and city administration.
Okay. Is there support for that motion? Support. Moved and supported.
Who supported?
Avakwa.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I make a comment on the motion?
Please do.
Yeah, I just wanted to apologize to Mr. Schneider. This was really, just so you know, a discussion that I wanted to start in regards to a process moving forward. And I, and I hope you understand that, that this is not, doesn't have anything to do specifically with your project. But I think that, you know, the point was made that even on a residential basis, we probably need to start tightening things up a little bit. And this is a process that we're moving through and we need to start figuring out how we're going to, you know, set a level base as we move forward. So unfortunately, you, you kind of got stuck up in it, so.
Could I respond, Mr. Chairman? Can I, can I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Please do.
All right. First of all, I appreciate the planning commission's tough work that they have to do. I do. You, half the people are going to be upset with half the projects that come in, half the people are going to laugh. I understand trying to protect the city and trying to protect the, the overall look of the city and make the right projects go. I, I do. And, and the comments that you suggested for our projects were taken to heart and performed. So I, I do get it. I, I'm not, you know, I get passionate sometimes. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that, you know, we're not out. We're all, you know, this is an investment, this is a large investment, as all developers put in money in product. So we just don't want them to be, me personally, but in general, developers don't want to be, you know, overburdened. Because you will, because you'll have more projects stalled. But I also understand the concern of projects that are now stalled in the city where nothing has been gone. I just don't know my projects, the right one to start off with. I think, you know, particularly, I think, and, and I don't mean to be selfish. I mean, I'm kind of at the end of the project, you know, to Dean's question. I'm at the end of, end of this process where to me, you know, something like this, something new like this should really come up at the beginning as someone submitting for the first time a site plan proposal where, where the expectations of the developer, they understand that going into a project, not at the last minute, that's kind of what took me back is it, that yes, I agree with you, something should be discussed within you, with, within your commission. But, you know, should you really be doing it on the back end of, you know, at the last minute on a project that's already moving forward? That's all I'm saying. To me, it seems a little bit unfair. Because me as developer, I could take that variable into consideration to know if I'm moving forward or not. Now it's just an extra burden on top of me that was unexpected, no matter what it is. It's an unexpected burden. And now, in, in general, I just don't think it's fair at this point, at this stage.
Thank you. So we have a motion and has it been supported? Yes, Dean, you supported the motion. We have the roll call, please.
Yes. Dixon?
Yes.
Bavakwa?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
King? King? You're, you're unmuted, Sarah. I apologize. So I'm not clear on something in terms of the motion. Just want to clarify, the performance bond or guarantee, what is that amount is to be negotiated with the city attorney?
It's to be negotiated with the city attorney. We didn't set an amount.
Okay.
City attorney and the developer.
And the intention is really just to either fill in the ground, return, you know, return it to the original condition? Should additional parts not be completed? Correct?
Yes. If the building, the first two buildings are finished, that's fine. If it stalls at that point, it would be to essentially landscape the remaining portion of the, of the soil that hasn't been taken, has been built.
Okay. Yes. Lord?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Mr. Schneider, thanks for indulging us. Congratulations.
Thank you. And again, and again, I do appreciate all the comments through this process. It's been helpful and enlightening and I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item, number seven, consideration of a site plan for an addition to the Pfizer building to house a new water for injection still to be located at twelve hundred Parkdale. Vidya, is that yours?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will pull up the site plan in front of them. At the city's request, we have done a preliminary review of a request from Pfizer to build an approximately seven hundred and fourteen square foot, single story addition to accommodate a new water for injection spill. The site is located east, the site as a whole is located east of Park Pharmaceuticals, on the south side of Parkdale, with a total site area of twenty-four point nine one acres and a zone RP, which is Research Park. The Research Park District allows for this kind of facility as a principal formative. Now, some members of the commission will recollect in twenty eighteen. The applicant received approval for a four thousand eight hundred square foot warehouse addition to an existing building. But I believe for financial or other reasons that addition was never built. That project is no part of the current project. This is a completely new and separate request. We did a preliminary review and we have a few questions regarding the project. Now, this is the site plan that was submitted. It is such a close up of the site that it's difficult to understand where exactly this addition is located in context to the rest of the buildings, the site. So, or which building it is actually attached to. So the location of the addition and its relation to the site's frontage on Parkdale, along with the interior drive on the site must be shown. There has to be a site plan overview that shows the street, the whole parcel, buildings, and identifies where exactly this building is being attached. The areas of pavement from the actual building footprint need to be clearly distinguished. Like there is this crosshatch area and this, I believe, is concrete. There is just too many details on the same sheet, which makes it difficult to read what is going on. There is this five foot wide concrete sidewalk strip going. Not sure if this is a sidewalk connection or this is a connection to a prime vein. I'm not sure what it is connecting to at this point over here. The proposed elevation, if you look at the elevation, it includes an overhead door. It includes an overhead door here and there is a little man door here. So some form of circulation needs to be shown. I'm not sure if this is a solid curb line or it's something else. So basically I have no idea how or what vehicle is going to get in here, how it's going to come out. This thing needs to be drawn better. The proposed addition is significantly taller than the building to which it is attached. If you look at the elevations, I will scroll down where this attached. We submitted a whole bunch of engineering details. We need site plan details. It's challenging. This is the proposed addition, the height of the building and the proposed addition significantly taller than. So assuming Parkdale is located somewhere to the north, northeast of where this addition is shown, I want to know whether from Parkdale, this addition will be visible, like something sticking out in the back. Just, just want to get an idea of it. We need clarification that there, any mechanical equipment is going to be on the rooftop. There is a couple of light fixtures shown over here. I'm assuming these are light fixtures. We see manufacturers, touchy details of this. Sorry, let me scroll back to the site plan of the wall mounted fixture details. If you look at the original site plan, it's got some notes and arrows that are scroll back to it. You have, you have over here arrow for wallet posts, there is an arrow for gravel, there is an arrow for dumpster. I'm not sure what all this is pointing at or whether it is a leftover layer on the autocad. So any details that are not relevant to the site plan itself need to be taken off. I would suggest that the utilities be placed on a separate sheet and the site plan details on a separate because it's very difficult to understand. Finally, we have a question whether any additional sound will be generated by this water for injection still. I'm not sure exactly what its function is in the pharmaceutical lineup of the facility. So maybe the applicant can give the planning commission a brief overview of what exactly this unit or addition is going to be doing. Subject to this information being provided on a revised set of plans, we would recommend that you place it at your next available agenda for consideration of site plan. I would be happy to answer your question.
Any questions for Vidya? Is there a representative of Pfizer with us?
Yeah, we, this is Chad Rainey with CRB Engineering. We're the engineering firm working on this project. And we also have representatives from Pfizer, Dave Seppo and Lisa Bolender on the line. I can answer some of these, these questions, Vidya, and we'll obviously follow up with, with documentation. So I can share my screen here.
Let me stop.
Okay, so you should see a Google Maps aerial image.
Yes.
Yes, Pfizer facility. This is Parkdale Road right here. Pfizer facility. This is Parkdale Road right here. The addition is going to go right, right here. So it will be visible from Parkdale. I want to note that this Google image shows a temporary trailer that was there at the time. The image was taken. That's no longer there. So that will be visible from Parkdale Road. I'm going to pull up the plans as well. One minute. Okay. So to answer some more of your questions, this, there's an existing sidewalk here and here that is going to be removed due to site demolition and such, but will be replaced. This sidewalk currently ends right at about where this five foot dimension is and then connects into a drive area here. And it goes over and connects into the Pfizer parking lot. So we're going to actually extend this sidewalk down along the east side of the addition here and that sidewalk will end right here. This is, this area is planned to be an area where vehicles can pull into and back up. There's an overhead door here to allow deliveries of salt to this facility. And we can get this cleaned up. Like you said, you know, we'll put the utilities on a separate sheet and this will just be a site plan. These notes here do refer to, there is an existing dumpster here. There are bollards. There's a fire protection post intercater valve right here that these bollards are protecting. So we'll get this cleaned up. As far as the elevation goes, you pull that up.
Chad, could you explain what exactly this water for injection still is? Maybe you could or David could explain what its function is?
Yeah, so it won't add any noise to the site. Pfizer currently has water for injection still in their facility already. And it's just at its end of life. That still is currently located in this existing room right here. And so in order to provide redundancy and increase capacity, they're going to they're building this addition and installing two new stills. So there won't be any increased noise from the site.
Could you explain what this does?
It basically sterilizes water so that it can be used in the manufacture of of their product, which is an injectable form of penicillin. So it's exactly what it says, water for injection. So it's a sterilized water that can be put in the process and injected into the body. For the elevation, so, yes, the new addition is considerably taller than the existing building. The, you can see here, the existing building is from the left over here. We are in, maybe not real clear, this is the roof line. There is a screen wall that we're going to put up right here so that it gives the appearance that the entire addition is the same elevation. The screen wall will also provide cover to conceal this air handling unit that will be on this lower roof right here. There, we are not planning to put any mechanical equipment on this upper roof so that, so there won't be any mechanical equipment visible from Parkdale Road. These are light fixtures and we will provide cut sheets for those for the next meeting. And I think Vidya, that addressed all of your comments.
Yes.
Do you think?
Yes, I think you pretty much covered it. You just need to show it on a revised set of plans, Chad, and it should be good.
Right.
We see a a sketch that shows what will be seen from Parkdale Road.
Let me see. Yes, this elevation right here. So this is, this is the, this note four denotes the screen wall, but it's basically, this is what you're going to see. The exterior finish is going to match the existing. So this is a picture of the existing facade here. So it'll, the new addition will match the existing.
Could you, when you come back, show us that actual picture of the front and superimposed where the, this new wall will be put in? The existing front of the building.
Yes, I believe we can do that.
Questions for these gentlemen? Okay, Vidya, I think what we're looking for is to put this on a future planning commission agenda.
Yes, please.
For what? For a public hearing and site plan consideration?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi Dennis, if I could, note one thing, please.
Please.
I just want to note that there are some areas of the building that are higher than others because there is a second floor on the building currently. So although this new addition has a slightly higher elevation than the adjacent room that it's on, it won't be the first higher elevation part of the building.
I think we'd be pleased if you did as best you could to blend it into the existing.
And we plan, like Chad said, to match all the finishes, so I don't think it'll be that noticeable, but we will be sure to do that.
So we need a motion to put this on a future planning commission agenda for public hearing and consideration of site plan.
So moved.
And who's the support?
Avakwa.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? The roll call, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Avakwa?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll see you in a few weeks and look forward to seeing the final plan.
Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Number seven is miscellaneous. Does anyone have any miscellany? I think we covered miscellaneous already.
Mr. Chairman, I got a letter today from St. John's Church. I've met out there twice. Cheesex has met once and Randy's met with them. So they have changed their leadership team. Pastor Mark has been really good to work with. They're trying to finalize the final plans, the grade, final paving, everything right now. The one thing they were aware of, they think they remember, and we're researching this, the planning commission gave them a one year window to keep the temporary trailers up until phase two was finished. They will not start phase two in the next year for funding reasons, but they'll complete all the site work, landscaping, everything now this fall. I think I might have to bring them back to ask for extension of the trailers for a year. And I could try and do that on the second meeting in September, if in fact, we do have to do that.
Planning Commission, I do recall that condition and so.
I think so too. So I would bring them back in a couple of weeks to ask for another year extension on the trail, which it's okay with us.
I believe we'd be fine with it. All things considered, we'll look for from you an update on how they're progressing and time of completion, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I would bring, I would bring their team in to explain. So, okay.
You say they have a new leadership team, a new pastor?
No, a new building facility. And actually, it's led by, you might have heard of Terry Gonsor, was the supervisor, I believe, in the township. He's been a member of that church since 1959. Now he didn't get elected, so he's got time on his hands. So they asked him if you would help them coordinate. That's because of what he did in his private life. That's what he did. He's helping them out, which is a nice thing.
Oh, sorry, Mayor.
As you say, we're happy Pastor Mark's not going anywhere.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
He sure seems like it. Every time he's been before us.
Very. Great rapport with the residents now that they're affecting it. He's worked with me three times to come up with some issues and we've got them all worked out.
He's a great public spokesman for them. Any other miscellaneous? Sienna, any other public comment? Come forward.
No, sir.
Okay, number 10 is yours.
Mr. Chairman. Dennis?
Yes.
Just a quick one. Two years ago, we came to you from the fire department in regards to Hero's Point. We're going to be doing our dedication to Hero's Point on September 11th at three o'clock.
Very good.
Thanks to the planning commission for giving us some guidance. If you remember, somebody suggested adding some sidewalks to tie into the inner circle, which has been a big hit with the people walking. So if you have time to participate in the dedication at three o'clock, please do so. If not, definitely take advantage of going through the landscaping and seeing the waterfall walls and the new landscaping and the lighting and Hero's Point, the newest pocket park in the city of Rochester. It's going to be live streamed and it's in front of, 3:00 PM, yeah, Friday.
Thank you.
It's also going to be live streamed through the city's website. Again, this is in front of the fire department.
Very good, very good. It looks beautiful from the street. I have not strolled through it yet, so I'm looking for.
Please do so.
Really nice.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hey, Sienna, it's yours.
Okay, so the upcoming item for September 24th, we received the packet of information from the multi-family project at 210 diversion. They came before you, I think, a couple ago or earlier this or last month with that project. So they did actually submit a full-fledged packet, so they will be on the upcoming agenda in a few weeks.
So if I recall, this is the project proposed at the south end of the bridge. Running on diversion and backing to the, I guess it's a mobile station at the top of the hill. Is that the one?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, very good. Okay.
That is all I have.
Okay. Anything else from the commissioners? If no one objects, this meeting is adjourned.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you.